Well, good evening, everyone. It is now six o'clock and we're going to head and call to order tonight's city council meeting. Tonight, the invocation will be by Apostle Terrence Hunley of the Place City of Miracles, and then Councilwoman Alexandra will lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shall we pray? Our eternal God, we thank you for another day that you have blessed and allowed us to meet. We come to you now, Heavenly Father, in prayer for this great city of Temecula, asking you to bless this city and all the officials in this council meeting on tonight. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraints. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and the dignity of those who disagree with us, to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renewing us with strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this in your sons and daughters. Confidence in your goodness and love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Alexandra.
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Calvis.
Here.
Mayor Schwank.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move into presentations. And for the first presentation this evening, we have a proclamation for National Manufacturing Month. And I do believe we have, yeah, we do have some folks here this evening. Wonderful. And then Mayor Protem Stewart is going to make his way down and present the proclamation at the podium.
All right, so as everybody knows, we have a very healthy manufacturing community here in Temecula. And I've actually been a part of your group and I stopped getting invited. I don't know why I'm not. Do you guys still have the meetings?
I canceled all invites.
Okay, got it, got it, got it. Okay, so. Yeah, yeah, I'd like to be involved again. So here's the City of Temecula proclamation. Whereas manufacturing is a vital part of our local economy, creating jobs and advancing technology and contributing to Temecula's prosperity, the City of Temecula acknowledges the Southwest Manufacturing Council for fostering, collaborating, and sharing best practices within our local manufacturing community. And Temecula is the home of more than 150 manufacturing companies, providing employment for over 7,000 individuals. And I think that's something we don't talk about. There are over 150 manufacturers in this town, which is incredible. Manufacturing industry is a powerhouse, adding $2.91 trillion annually to the nation's economy, with a total economic impact of $2.60 for every $1 spent. And as of August 2023, the manufacturing sector employed nearly 13 million workers in the United States, providing competitive wages averaging $100,000 a year. That's another thing that doesn't get talked about. These are not low-paying jobs. These are, these are good jobs that we need to have employees know about. So bolstering the livelihoods and economic stability and the future of manufacturing is bright, with projections calling for an additional 4 million manufacturing jobs in the United States by 2030. And the City of Temecula proudly embraces this thriving sector, celebrating local manufacturers and their outstanding contributions to our community. On behalf of Mayor Zach Schwank in the City of Temecula, I make this proclamation month of October 2023, National Manufacturing Month. So congratulations. Thank you for all the work you guys do. So, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, so my name is Patrick McCoy. I am with Paulson Manufacturing. We've been here in Temecula for 76 years. And I am also the co-chair of the SCMC Southwest California Manufacturing Council. And to Stu's point, that's what we do. We get together as a manufacturing community. We share our wins, we share our struggles, you know, our common pitfalls, our best practices, trying to bolster our manufacturing community, which creates so much value to the economy. It's a well-known statistic that for every one manufacturing job, five more are created down, down the supply chain and down in the value stream. And so we're very proud of our best-kept secret here in Temecula. You know, not a lot of folks know about our companies. Of course, we know about, you know, Abbott and Scott's Miracle Grove, but there's, like he said, 150 manufacturers in this valley. We're very proud of that. And our goal here is to not only bolster the manufacturing community, to make it as prosperous as possible, but to also let folks know, hey, there are great, high-paying, high-skill, high-wage jobs right here in Temecula Valley that you don't need to commute to San Diego or to LA or to Orange County to go to. They're right here in the Temecula Valley, and we're here to foster that. So with that being said, I'd like to pass it to my, my partner Juan Carlos, who can tell you a little bit more about our workforce development efforts.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Carlos Duran. I work at Opta Forums. We are, we've been in Temecula since 1984. We're a metal component manufacturer. And we, the culture in our building is very much rooted in the idea of uplifting each other. So there's, most of our senior management have been together for over 15 years. It speaks to the way that this community that we have at the SCMC, made up of a lot of manufacturers, all the companies are rooted in very much the same ideas that we have to build for tomorrow. So we're encouraged, we've built a pipeline with, hoping to put more kids and enthuse more kids into manufacturing possibilities and building bridges with the local school districts to work with their CTE programs, their career technical education programs. And these programs are really, they're fantastic. They're, they're, they're really going to be the way to get our kids back into, and in our case, into manufacturing positions that are high-skilled, high-paid. And they're going to keep our kids coming back after they've gotten their degrees and coming back to, or just working right into manufacturing positions here, available right out of high school. So there's opportunity here. And there's, there's an extreme, this is a great time for not just the manufacturing community to embrace what's happening at the school district, but to help uplift it. There's a lot of bridges that need to be made. So we're very grateful. Jenny Hooters here in the building, so she's a very big part there, and as well as Marietta. And we're hoping to really extend this at some point. But at the end of the day, the, we've created a little bit, when I say pipeline, there's internships available with a lot of companies and even for kids out of high school to, for them to see that there's, there's a chance for them to be earning a good wage within a few years without having the burdens of college debt. And when they're not really sure which direction to go, but they found some way, some company that, oh, this, they make something really neat. And there's a lot of different ways I can use my skills. So it's, those opportunities are available. And that's what we're going to continue to grow. We're really proud of that. And thank you very much for.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Shawna wants to grab a picture and I'm not sure. Did we have a video that we wanted to show as well from Manufacturing Month? Yeah, we want to make sure we show that. We don't want Temecula to be a secret. We want the secret to get out. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for that reading of the proclamation. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and city staff. And thank you, audience, for being here tonight in support of October as Manufacturing Month. And if you're not here for that, I hope you learned something fun and interesting along the way. My name is Tanis Earl, and I work to foster and promote economic development through our business community. And to conclude our celebration today, I'd like to bring up Steve Stomatis. He's from the Grecian Soap Manufacturing Company, and we have a special little video to play for you today. So we'll go ahead and roll that now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Stomatis. Thanks for stopping by the Grecian Soap Company, where we manufacture natural soaps and other products made from goat's milk, olive oil, and locally sourced organic ingredients. The idea came from memories of my grandmother making her own homemade soaps from the same ingredients. So about 10 years ago, my wife Carly and I started the Grecian Soap Company in our kitchen. We outgrew that and moved to our three-car garage. From there, we expanded, and now we're located here off Yunes Road in Temecula. Today, we're going to make a custom product for the city Temecula. Come on, let's check it out. Our Grecian Soap Company products can be found locally in several Temecula retail stores. Products can be purchased online and stripped anywhere, or you can stop by and shop in person. Visit greciansoap.com for more information about our wonderful organic and premium products we manufacture right here in Temecula. Thanks for visiting.
And you'll all notice you have a lovely Temecula custom-made soap there in front of you there. Yep, that's it.
Thank you very much, Steve. This will be in my bathroom tonight, but it's not open to the public, so they'll have to go somewhere else to find their own.
That's true, that's true.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
We're very proud to be here in Temecula. We actually been here for a couple of years, been in business for about nine. It's funny, I was at a trade show last week in Las Vegas and mentioned that we're in Temecula. And everybody knows what Temecula is. It's really surprising how many people know about Temecula. So very proud to be here, very proud to be a part of the community. And I think we're, we here for quite a long time. So thank you for having me today.
Wonderful, thank you.
And before I go, I just want to give a shout out to Jenny Hooters, who's here too. She's the TV ESD CTE program, Creating Pathways for Youngsters, which was just mentioned. And also from the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce, Christine Castro is here today. She's a big part of the council, as well as Brooke Nun. And tonight, Brooke is here at this meeting on her birthday. So happy birthday, Brooke.
All right.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. All right, so our next proclamation is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Welcome. Good evening.
Hello.
All right, so. All right, so.
He's bringing you another one.
Now can you, yeah, you can hear me now. Okay, so this is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Domestic violence affects the lives of many of the city, many in the city of Temecula, and its impact is felt not only by victims, but by their children, families, and communities. And far too many people suffer abuse at the hands of their parents and domestic partners. The domestic violence victims can be of any race, age, religion, economic status. And domestic violence is not a private matter, but a crime, the consequences of which reach with devastating effects on the communities, schools, workplace of our nation. And children from violent homes are physically abusive or seriously neglected at a higher rate than the national average and have a greater risk of substance abuse, juvenile delinquency, cognitive and development problems, as well as fear, anxiety, and guilt. And domestic violence is more than the occasional family dispute. It is known as intimate partner violence, where all behaviors are perpetrated by someone who is and was or wishes to be involved in an intimate or dating relationship and are aimed at establishing power and control by one partner over another. And the public awareness and education about domestic violence are needed, as well as collaborative efforts on the part of government, health professionals, law enforcement, religious organizations, educators, and the community associations to address domestic violence prevention, intervention, and treatment of victims. And the City of Temecula, in partnership with the Safe Family Justice Centers of Riverside County, seek to provide protection and prevention services towards ensuring family justice through collaboration, community-based comprehension, comprehensive centers. The City of Temecula takes care and consideration of its residents seriously and wishes to ensure attention to be paid to these victims. Mayor Zach Schwank, on behalf of the city council and the City of Temecula, hereby do declare October Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. For those that don't know, my name is Marshall Hamilton. I supervise the Temecula location of the Family Justice Centers. We were actually founded here in Temecula Valley in 1998, so we're looking at 25 years here in December. The city's played an integral part in our ability to serve victims of violence here in the community. Just in 2023 alone, we've served 3,000 people in the county, 900 of which have been here in the Temecula Valley. And a good portion of those are children as well. So our goal really is to provide as many safety services as possible in order to make sure that people have a safe and stable place to live and to be within their families, as well as re-establishing their hope in what their family can look like in the future. Our work with young people really is centered around making sure that the family violence that's currently occurring doesn't overtake the next generation. I do really want to thank the city for supporting Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as well as supporting our centers throughout the years. We have grown into such a large impact that we've served. Last year, we served about 3,000, 4,000 people. We're already at, obviously, at pace to succeed that. And our really, our goal is to make sure that people know about the services that we have available, so that nobody is confused as where to go if they're facing violence at home. And just a quick, you know, it's pervasive here in the valley, as well as everywhere else here in the US. But studies show about 20 people per minute are faced with physical violence by their intimate partner. And actually, physical assault by an intimate partner is more likely to put you in the hospital than any other physical violence by a stranger. So we work with our community partners, as well as the local law enforcement, many businesses locally, to make sure that people have the resources that they need when they're looking to flee or stay in their relationship safely. So I do want to thank the city for recognizing us and supporting our mission for the last 25 years.
Thank you. Those are, that's sobering when you say that. So I know we're proud of the work that you're doing in our community. It's necessary work, unfortunately. We're proud of the work you're doing in our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
They're going to take a quick photo and then.
Yeah, and I'll do.
This is serious business, Stu.
Marshall, if I can just add one thing. I just, again, as well, from all of us here at the council, I just really want to thank you very much because I've been able to see again firsthand what you all do on a daily basis and helping out the community. I've had a phone call right here at the city where you guys were able to step right in and be able to help out a woman in need. And it's a constant thing, that's what you guys do. So I can't thank you enough for helping out the children, whether it's PAL or any of the other organizations, the backpacks and all that you do, because it's beyond just helping women, it's really going above and beyond. So I applaud you and your staff and everybody who works with you. So thank you again, bottom of my heart.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next up, we have our board and commission reports. So first up, we will move to Community Services Commission. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Schwank, city council members, city staff. It's a pleasure to be here with you this month. We wasn't, weren't here to represent last month since we had canceled our meeting because it was the same date as our 9/11 memorial. We did meet last night here in council chambers. We are a commission of five. We have commissioners Ernest Castro, Ewan Hawkes, Jeff Kingsburg, Gary Adi, and myself. The purpose of our commission is to review and make recommendations on topics related to the parks and recreation element of the general plan and to provide parks and recreation services and programs for the community. Next slide. At last night's meeting, we had a wonderful presentation from our aquatics program as a recap this past summer season. And we were able to recognize our junior guard and swim buddy volunteers. We had a full house, well, until we got to the business minutes. So you guys can understand how that works. And then we did have some business items. We approved our action minutes from our August 14, 2023 meeting. And we also had a discussion about the need or not need for subcommittees with our commission. And we did decide that we did not need any subcommittees, and we eliminated a sports committee liaison position. Our next meeting will be here in council chambers on Monday, November 13, 2023. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Chair Sizmar? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our Traffic Safety Commission.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. The Traffic Commission meets the last Thursday of every month, the fourth Thursday of every month. Our commissioners are Eric Ackerman, myself, David Maddox, James Richardson, and Bradley Sullivan. Traffic Commission reviews and makes recommendations on topics related to speed zones, stop signs, signals, pavement markings, traffic design, and engineering. Our last meeting was September 28. At that meeting, we coordinated, we had a discussion or a presentation on coordinated signal timing for the PW 18-05 fiber optic communication system upgrade, which I believe is on number 11 on your consent calendar. It was a receiving file for us. And it was a good discussion on where these upgrades are and the timing and everything on that. Next slide. And then we had a presentation on the stop controls and pedestrian crossings here on Mercedes between 3rd and 6th. And we recommended that move it, we had an anonymous vote, anonymous. Unanimous vote was anonymous. We all voted for it to send the resolution to, or send it to the city council for resolution to have that done at the crosswalks between, on Mercedes between 3rd and 6th and stop controls. Next slide. And just one other thing. We did have a public comment on a possible parking issue that may come up on La Cienda's street when the apartment complex is completed. So staff is going to look at that, and I'm sure it'll be an agenda item in the future. But one of the business owners came with concerns about parking. So that's it.
All right, any questions for Chair Carter? All right, we appreciate both of you and your commission's work. Thank you. All right, we'll move to Public Safety Report. And this evening, we have Chief Crater.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, council member staff, and Temecula residents. Yeah, your fire department here in the city of Temecula for September ran 890 calls, six of them being fires, four of those being hazardous materials incidents. 656 were medical emergencies, and then 79 traffic collisions. And then year-to-date, 7,613. Next slide. And here are the fire station trends in your district. Station 73 is the busiest, and these have been relatively consistent throughout the year. I haven't seen, you know, any, any real increase to be worried about to add additional staffing in the city. Next slide. All right, for fire prevention, our plan checks for September, 459. Construction inspections, 604. Special permit zero, annual inspections, 368. You can see the year-to-date there is 5,255. The goal with the annual inspections is to hit every business, schools, and then multifamily dwellings in the city. And that is a good program, and it's working well. And then 35 people came in the city hall to do their business. Next slide. For emergency management in the city, our emergency manager's been busy. He attended some trainings, which included the Cyber Security Working Group held at Rancho Water. Also attended and got certified as an instructor in the Specialized Training Institute and Outreach, and that's through the state of California. And then began the process looking at the library to serve as a secondary EOC. That's not final. We're just looking at that, and we realized that having one EOC or Emergency Operations Center in the city, we might want to rethink that and look at other options for the future. So he's doing his job there, and I appreciate Michael Alfred's work. We also threw a grant, the MPG Grant, purchased additional redundant communications here in the city so we could communicate in case of disaster strikes and phones don't work and other means of communication that we normally would use are not operable. And planning community events that's supported out of the Emergency Management Department and the Fire Department's Third Annual Preparedness Fair, and then the Community Health and Resource Fair. So both of those were successful, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Councilmember Alexander.
Could you go back to that slide with the districts?
Yes.
Please.
One more.
Thank you. So this, I just out of curiosity, because you had just said that these numbers kind of stay consistent in each district. Why, just out of curiosity, if you even know, are some, like, some districts have higher calls than others? And am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, it's density and population.
It is, okay.
We're, we're not off by much, 243 to, you know, 219 to 274 is not a huge amount. The one, one, one station that's low is Station 95. That, that station does run quite a few calls in the city, and we only capture what they run. They run quite a few calls in the county, and we only capture what calls they run actually in the city limits.
Okay.
So that number for them is probably about 112 calls a month.
Yeah.
And that's why we have a partnership with Riverside County to fund half of the firefighters at that station.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
No problem.
Mayor Protem Stewart?
That was my question. I was going to ask too, where is 73 at?
Station 73 is, is off of Winchester Road, over in the Business District.
Commerce Center.
Commerce Center in, that's where we have our truck station too. So we have two pieces of equipment that run out of that station, and they, they're busier because of that as well.
Yeah. And 95 is summer's bend, so as that builds out, you'll see that number likely go up. Although, be happy if it stayed low, right?
Sure, that'd be good. That's good business practice and, and a safe community, for sure. We don't want to actually run calls because that means bad things are happening in the community, so.
Right. All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have one public comment on a non-agendized item. It is Mr. Roger Williams. And I have confirmed for Mr. Williams that item number nine on the agenda does not have anything to do with the Old Town Local Review Board or any parking fees. And so he is no longer wishing to speak on that. So, Mr. Williams.
Um, and so he is no longer wishing to speak on that. So, uh, Mr. Williams, it's all yours.
Hey, good evening, uh, council members and other board members. If you don't know me, I'm Roger Williams. I want you to put a face to it, uh, because, uh, Mr. Merrill, Mr. Adams, uh, Ms. Russo, Ms. Joe Olsen, and Ms. Betsy Laurie. I want to say thank you on behalf of the second district out by Vale Ranch Middle School. If you recall, last year, you went to battle for our community with the school district to get the school recreational areas opened up during non-school hours. I invite you to drive through our community, to see the community members as they participate utilizing those facilities. There's parents, kids interacting, uh, the physical fitness is all working out great. Again, thank you on behalf of my community. Uh, also, a couple of items, one other item I want you to go to bat for me again on. If you could get the lights turned on because it's getting dark so early, so that the lights that are on the timer, if they could stay on to at least seven, eight o'clock at night so that the community can continue to participate on the track, on the field. Uh, it's turning out to be our community exercise area. I really would appreciate your support again on that matter. Uh, another issue I'd like to bring up, which wasn't here, which isn't an agenda item. Last week, we heard a presentation from the Old Town Review Board. One of the things they brought up was charging for parking in Old Town. How about this? They add more than two handicap parking spaces instead of charging people who live in the city to park in Old Town. I, I think that's, that's wrong. There's only two free handicap parking spaces. One of them's in this parking lot and one of them's on Front Street. But you want to charge people to park other places. That literally makes no sense to me. Uh, also to the parks and recreation people, one thing I want to say, hey, on the southeast side of Temecula in, uh, Red Hulk, we have two parks. Neither one of them have restrooms, right? Red Hulk, we are one of the oldest communities in Temecula. I've been here since, uh, nineteen ninety-three. You're creating a health hazard for that community by having these tot lots, these parks where people bring their kids. Where do you think those families and those kids go to the restroom at? We require people pick up after their dogs. They don't pick up after their kids. Why can't we have, uh, porta-johns put there?
Roger, your time's up.
Thank you. I appreciate your time and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Roger. Take care.
Mr. Mayor, there are no public comments under non-agendized items other than that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move to city council reports. Uh, do any of my colleagues have anything to report out this evening? Mayor Protim Stewart?
So I believe we have a video, because, uh, this last Saturday was the first Temecula History Day. And so, um, it went off very well. I mean, there's definitely more we can add next year, and I think we are. We're, we got a lot more time to plan for it, so we're gonna amp it up a few degrees, so. But if we could play the video, that'd be great. We just completed our first ever Temecula History Day. And that came about me being a history nut, especially of Temecula. I suggested that we kind of incorporate some of these stories and things that took place in Temecula past. And I've been able to compile a whole lot of history on Temecula through the Temecula Historical Society. And so, um, it's been a really fun adventure to take everybody on because Temecula has a very, very powerful and fun history. So next time, put Temecula History Day on your calendar. You'll, you won't regret it. Good time. Yeah, it was great having the posse. That was the posse you saw there. Um, I don't know if you guys know, we have an actual Temecula posse in Temecula that rides around on horses and arrests people. Oh, they don't arrest anybody, but they're there for, um, crowd control, enjoyment, and lots of photo opportunities, so. So anyways, thank you all for who helped make this happen, Community Service Department, and, um, it was great. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alexander?
Alrighty, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so first off, if I just want to let the individual, the gentleman, I know we've spoken before, I forgot your name, I'm so sorry. Um, I will absolutely, because you're in my district especially, make sure that I speak to staff about your items that you brought up and make sure that we can, um, go from there at that point. So I want to make sure you were heard, okay? Uh, number two, I just received a, an email from a community leader just recently. It was yesterday. Uh, it was Rabbi Abrams. And, uh, after their holiday celebration, uh, he just was informed about the war that just started, uh, just, uh, within the last couple days. And I just want to just let people know that tonight, there is a vigil going on tonight at six o'clock. It started about a half an hour ago over at the Duck Pond, uh, just to be able to bring prayers out for Israel of all they're going on over the thousands of rockets that were hit over into their area. And also, um, for the women and children that have been slaughtered. And so I just ask that you keep them in your prayers and, uh, that we, along with the rest of the United States that has been going along with us, can continue to lift them up. So thank you very much, and, uh, that's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I do have a couple, uh, quick videos. Last meeting ran a little long, so I punted on the Just the Facts with Zach, so if we could go ahead and roll that video, please?
Hey there, Temecula. I'm Mayor Zach Schwank, and I'd like to welcome you back to Just the Facts with Zach. In our last episode, we explored our sustainable and livable community core value. And if you missed it, head on over to at City of Temecula and check it out. In this episode, we will examine our safe and prepared community core value. Being a safe and prepared community has always and will always be our number one core value. This is reflected in our budget priorities. Of the total general fund, we allocate fifty-six percent to public safety. Giving our public safety partners the resources they need sets the tone for our community, and it creates an environment where our residents and businesses can thrive. As Temecula continues to attract new and exciting businesses to our unique and vibrant Old Town, maintaining a family-friendly environment continues to drive our decision-making process. What we budget for our sheriff's department allows us to maintain a staffing ratio of one sworn deputy per nine hundred and thirty residents. That surpasses our target of one sworn deputy per one thousand residents. This investment allows us to implement specialized teams like CORE, which is community outreach, resource, and engagement, and the Metro Team. Speaking of the Old Town Metro Team, they are supported by code enforcement, building and safety, and fire inspection personnel, so health and safety issues can be addressed proactively. The Metro Team is now stationed in the Old Town Temecula Sheriff's Substation, right here next to City Hall. Having these deputies with a permanent home base in the heart of our city improves response times and increases patrol hours on our streets. This community policing model serves our residents, businesses, and visitors well. Whether your next trip to Old Town is to enjoy one of our established favorites like The Swing Inn or to check out something new like Weldon Wool or the Temecula Sunset Market, be sure to say hi to the Metro Team and let them know how much you appreciate them being part of our community. I hope you enjoyed learning more about one of the ways we impact our residents, businesses, and visitors here in Temecula, and how we bring our quality of life master plan to life. Take care, and I hope you all can get outside, live, experience, and enjoy everything Temecula offers.
All right. We've got a couple more episodes coming up before the end of the year, so I'm looking forward to, uh, finishing out that series, Just the Facts with Zach. We also have, um, a budget video that I really wanted to show. You know, over the course of the last few years, I've advocated that we need to be, not that we weren't transparent in any way, because we certainly were, but there's always more you can do. You can always, um, you know, do more. And so we brought the budget to different commissions, and now we're doing, uh, some short reels on social media that I'd like to show. Uh, it seems very engaging and, and I'd like to thank our city manager and our city manager's office for taking the time to get this good information out to the community.
Hey, Temecula. Aaron Adams here with Budget Talk. This month, we're focusing on the city's revenue sources to shed light on where the city's revenue originates. This fiscal year, our total operating revenue is nearly a hundred and sixty million dollars, of which eighty-two percent comes from sales tax and property tax. Sales tax generates fifty-eight percent of the city's revenue. So when you shop in Temecula, a portion of the eight point seven five percent sales tax goes to the city, but the majority goes to the state of California. For every dollar you spend on taxable goods and services, you pay eight point seven five cents in sales tax. The state gets six cents, the city gets two cents, and the county gets three quarters of a cent. Property tax accounts for twenty-four percent of the city's revenue and is based on the value of your home or property. For every dollar paid in property tax, forty-five cents goes to the local public schools. Riverside County gets twenty-three cents, and special districts receive about twenty-one cents. The city is left with approximately eleven cents on the dollar. To put this into perspective, if you bought a forty thousand dollar car, the city receives eight hundred dollars in sales tax. And if you owned a seven hundred thousand dollar home, the city receives approximately seven hundred and seventy dollars in property tax each year. If I can leave you with one takeaway, shop in Temecula, shop local, including getting gas and buying goods so the tax revenue comes back to fund our city services, such as public safety, the maintenance of our roads and infrastructure, and beautifully landscaped parks and recreation centers, and much more. When you shop outside of Temecula, then you are funding that city service. Tune in next month for more fiscal facts.
All right. And thanks again, Mr. City Manager. Great job and really appreciate that work. All right, we will move now to our consent calendar. All right, item number one is waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Two, approve action minutes of September twenty-sixth and September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Item three, approve list of demands. Item four, approve agreement with Department of California Highway Patrol for construction zone enhanced enforcement program services for the I fifteen French Valley Parkway improvements, phase two, PW sixteen dash zero one. Five, approve grant deeds for transfer of certain real property interest and relinquishment of access rights to the State of California Department of Transportation for the I fifteen state route seventy-nine south ultimate interchange, PW zero four dash zero eight. Item six, approve agreement for consultant services with Mark Thomas and Company, Inc. for the I fifteen congestion relief, PW nineteen dash zero two. Uh, seven, award construction contract to American Asphalt South, Inc. for citywide slurry seal program, PW twenty-three sixteen. Uh, eight, approve eighth amendment to the agreement for consultant services with Eskill LLC for plan review services. Nine, approve plans and specifications and authorized solicitation of construction bids for sidewalks, Old Town improvements, south side of Sixth Street, Old Town Front Street to Mercedes, PW twenty-two dash one six. Ten, approve plans and specifications and authorized solicitation of construction bids for the Santa Gratuitas Creek Trail, Phase Two, Margarita Road Undercrossing, Project PW nineteen dash zero four. Excuse me. And eleven, uh, accept improvements and file notice of completion for fiber optic communication system upgrade project. Oh, my gosh. Almost done. PW eighteen dash zero five.
Move approved. Second.
All right, and that's five zero, and I'm, I'm sorry, four zero. I'm happily going to recess to your meetings, too.
All right, so I will call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Secretary, given that we're all still here, are there any public comments? All right, so we'll go on to item number twelve, which is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motion and second. Please vote. All right, that passes four zero. So item number thirteen is approve ratification of election results for track map number three seven three four one and three seven three four one dash seventeen within Summers Bend to service level B residential streetlights, rates, and charges located east of Butterfield Stage and north of Long Valley Wash. Madam City Clerk, could we have a?
Yes, uh, we will start with a staff report and, uh, we will go ahead and do ballot tabulation as well, but go ahead with the staff report.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protim and President Stewart, council members. So the agenda item is to ratify the election results for the two tracks in the Summers Bend development into our service level B or residential street lighting assessment. And that, um, annexation is a requirement, uh, or the process is a requirement under California Proposition two eighteen, which requires that any, uh, increase or new property-based assessments, uh, require a, a vote or a, a mail ballot process, and that, uh, a majority of the ballots returned be in favor of that, um, approval in order for that to pass. So that's the process that we, that we'll be doing here today. But I wanted to give you a, um, little background on the service level B assessment, just as a beginning here. So the, uh, Temecula Community Services District was formed, uh, when the city incorporated in nineteen eighty-nine. And then in nineteen ninety-seven, when the city's residents approved Measure C and authorized the TCSD to, to establish an assessment for both park maintenance and for lighting, that's what created service level B, is that approval in, in, um, nineteen ninety-seven. So the service level B, as I mentioned, is to fund our residential street lighting, uh, on all the residential streets in the city. So we, currently, we have thirty-two thousand eight hundred and nine parcels that are in, in the service level B assessment. Uh, and again, those are all the parcels that are on the public streets in the city, and that pays for the street lighting on all the public streets in the city. Uh, at your meeting on August twenty-second of this year, the council voted to set the public hearing for the annexation of these two tracks in the Summers Bend development into that service level B assessment and set that public hearing date for this evening. Uh, after the setting of the public hearing, ballots were sent out to all the property owners within the two tracks that are being annexed into the assessment. And so there were a hundred and thirty-two parcels that are being annexed into this assessment. So this will add all of the parcels in the Summers Bend development into the service level B assessment, uh, because those are, majority of those streets in that, in that development are public streets and the street lighting is, is uh, city's streetlights. And so that assessment then will pay for the, the street lighting in that development. So, uh, we're here tonight after the setting of the public hearing and the mailing out of those ballots is to count those ballots. And then if there's a majority in favor of annexing those parcels into the service level B assessment, then that will go forward, and that assessment will begin in fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. The assessment is twenty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents per year. So all the parcels, uh, in the service level B, uh, currently pay that assessment, and that is the assessment that was established when the service level B was established in, in, um, nineteen ninety-seven. So that, that assessment has been in place ever since that was originally established. And that does generate enough revenue to cover the cost of the residential street lighting throughout the city. So we're here tonight again to, um, count those ballots, and then assuming there's a majority, uh, of votes that are in favor of annexing those parcels, then those parcels will be added to that assessment beginning in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. So that completes the staff report, and I'm not sure if the city clerk has those results yet, but if so, then we can announce that, or?
We do not have the results at this time. Uh, Mr. President, I would invite you to go ahead and facilitate any questions of the staff report first.
Any questions? I do have one. Is there a built-in escalator for inflationary concerns?
No, there's not. And, um, again, that assessment at that twenty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents per year per parcel has been in place ever since the assessment began, um, in nineteen ninety-seven. So in order to increase that for all the residents, that unto itself would require a, a, um, majority vote to, to pass that.
Okay, all right.
Assuming there are no other questions, uh, Mr. President, I would invite you to go ahead and open up the public hearing.
And I will open up the public hearing. Do we have any comments?
Mr. President, we do not have any public comments. I would invite you to close the public hearing.
I will close the public hearing.
And at this point, Mr. President, we will go ahead and conduct the canvas of the election. You will, you are free to go ahead with the rest of the agenda, uh, for TCSD. And when I receive the results, um, that are being calculated in the conference center across the way, there's only fourteen ballots, it should come very quickly, then we will go ahead and reconvene and announce those results.
So let's just do just that.
Can we add just one additional comment? So typically, um, what we've done in the past on residential development or subdivisions is this annexation into the service level B has done basically as part of the, the development process. So when the, um, developer basically still owns all the property, they have voted to annex it in. In this case, because the Summers Bend project took so long to go through the approval and then ultimately development process, these parcels are not being added until now. And, um, and so the developer still owns a large number of the parcels in these two tracks that are being annexed. But there were a number of individuals who also have purchased homes and, and own parcels, so they did have the right to vote on this. And so the, the number of ballots returned is, is a relatively low, low number because the developer still owns a large number of the parcels, which they will then vote, uh, under, for their parcels as well.
All right. So let's move on to director's report.
So we would just like to invite everyone to the grand reopening of the Mary Phillips Senior Center that's right here in Old Town. It's going to be this Thursday, October twelfth at ten AM. And not only are we celebrating the reopening of the Mary Phillips Senior Center after a bit of a rehab and renovation that it just underwent, we are also celebrating the thirtieth anniversary of the Senior Center. So we're very excited to do this and we invite the entire community to come and enjoy it. That concludes my report.
All right.
I can stretch it out if we need to, to get those ballots back.
All right, so what about our general manager report?
Mr. President, I don't have anything further to add tonight. How are we doing on the ballot counting?
We, we don't have the ballots yet. We can continue to move on, Mr. President. We can just, um, go ahead and adjourn and then we can just, uh, uh, I'm sorry, not adjourn, but just, um, go ahead and, um,
Leave the public hearing open.
Recession, recess, uh, this particular meeting and then move on to the other portion of the meeting. At that point, um, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and let you know. We can recess back to re, um, recall the meeting of the TCSD.
I'll recess. Back to city council.
Back to city council. Okay, I will reconvene to make the city council. We have one item. This is a business item. Number fourteen, receive and file presentation on community land trust and regional housing trust at the request of council member Kalfis. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Heidi Urias and I will be presenting on community land trust and regional housing trust tonight. So we are here at the request of council member Kalfis. And some of the discussion points that I'll be going over tonight are affordable housing, uh, production in the city of Temecula, an overview of community land trusts, an overview of regional housing trusts, and providing, um, everyone with a conclusion here tonight. Uh, this is a broad conversation, high level, based on the research staff has conducted. Uh, so affordable housing, affordable housing is a government subsidized residential development that is rent or purchase price restricted and, uh, the tenants are income-based. Here you'll see, uh, income restrictions for California redevelopment law for two thousand twenty-three. And this is just, um, a snapshot of the numbers we use to income-qualified tenants in our housing developments currently, based on using redevelopment dollars for these projects. So affordable housing production. Uh, in nineteen ninety-one, city council established the transfer of the redevelopment agency to the city of Temecula. And since then, uh, the affordable housing units that have been developed in the city are seven hundred and five. And currently we have a hundred and sixty-nine units in the pipeline. This includes Vine Creek, Las Haciendas, um, Habitat, Habitat Way Two and Rancho Las Bolsas. The redevelopment funds invested prior to two thousand twelve totaled approximately twenty-five million dollars. And from two thousand twelve, I remind you that in two thousand twelve, the state took away redevelopment funding. Um, so from two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty-three, the city has invested approximately sixteen point five million dollars to continue the development of affordable housing. So what is a community land trust? Uh, CLT for short. It's an independent nonprofit organization that acquires, owns and stewards land permanently for affordable housing. The primary mission is to provide long-term affordable housing and protect communities' interests by maintaining ownership of the land. Uh, I know a question that could be posed is how long can they hold ownership of this land? And approximately ninety-nine years or up to ninety-nine years. Ownership structure of a CLT. So CLT owns a land while homeowners own the structures built on the land through paying a ground lease. Uh, under the CLT model, the trust owns the underlying land and sells the houses to an individual homeowner at an affordable price. The other option is the CLT can lease the land to an affordable housing developer and restrict rents through a ground lease. So, um, governance and funding. So CLTs are governed by a board of directors such as leaseholders, which are residents or tenants, uh, living on CLT-owned land, community members and experts and funders. Uh, two-thirds of the board is made up of community members. This is why CLTs are often, uh, referred to as community-controlled organizations. And I know a question that may, many municipalities may pose is, well, why can't city council be a governing board of a CLT? And that's because the city cannot be the landowner of affordable housing and a trust can be. Uh, CLTs can access a variety of funding, uh, such as grants, donations, low-interest loans, just like any other nonprofit organization could or any affordable housing developer. Um, so I know, um, that after sharing on what a CLT is and how they can own land, a question posed could be, well, how is that different from what we already do in our deals? And so one of our current deals that I've brought before council is Habitat for Humanity. And I wanted to bring and provide council with the differences between a CLT and Habitat for Humanity and how that's structured. And so a CLT owns the land forever, again, ninety-nine plus years. Habitat for Humanity has a forty-five-year deed restriction with the city. Uh, now that doesn't mean that after forty-five years Habitat can go ahead and do as they please with, with the land. This just means that there's an option for syndication and that forty-five-year clock resets. And so the goal is that we continue to have affordable housing, uh, on this deed restriction land. CLT has a board, which is two-thirds community members and Habitat is a nonprofit with their own governing board of their choice. Uh, the CLT operates primarily within a specific geographic area. So if a CLT is for the city of Temecula, then it would only focus on city of Temecula. Of course Habitat for Humanity can operate in the region as they please, um, not just one specific area. CLT will have to partner with a nonprofit or hire their own team internally to manage the assets and prepare future tenants for homeownership. And since nineteen ninety-one, Habitat for Humanity has developed, sold, managed, uh, single-family homes, um, at affordable prices and prepared future tenants for homeownership and continues preserving homes through their capital improvement projects. Both of them have the same goal, which is to create affordable housing that is long-term for our community. So what is a regional housing trust or RHT? It's a collaborative organization that pool resources and funds from multiple municipalities and stakeholders to address housing issues at a regional level. So the goal is to create more comprehensive and coordinated approach to affordable housing. The city is a member of Western Riverside Council of Governments, also known as WRCOG, and they have this RHT initiative or Regional Housing Trust Initiative. Uh, ownership struggle, uh, ownership structure and governance. So the RHTs do not own land or housing units such as the CLTs do. Uh, and instead they facilitate funding, they focus on policy advocacy and coordination among member jurisdictions and organizations. RHTs are governed by a board of representatives from member cities, counties, nonprofit organizations and stakeholders. Uh, the decision-making is often involved between multiple jurisdictions. And then WRCOG does recommend a nonprofit slash joint venture powers agreement variation model. Funding and focus, RHTs rely on contributions from member jurisdictions, grants and partnerships. And then RHTs address housing challenges across multiple jurisdictions, emphasizing regional collaborations to tackle affordable housing more comprehensively. So it's not just, again, Temecula-based, it would be more on a regional level. And CLTs versus RHTs. So CLTs are a localized entity focused on land ownership and housing development within a specific community. RHTs take a regional approach addressing housing challenges upon multiple jurisdictions. CLT owns and manages housing units directly. RHTs facilitate the coordination and funding of affordable housing projects, but don't own the housing or land directly. Uh, CLTs emphasize community engagement and control while RHTs emphasize regional collaboration and policy advocacy. In conclusion, both community, uh, land trusts and regional housing trusts are potential tools to address the city's affordable housing needs. As a member of WRCOG, staff will continue to monitor the Regional Housing Trust Initiative and further exploration and engagement with supportive housing service ad hoc committee are necessary to determine the viability and appropriateness of establishing ACLT or an RHT in our city. I would also like to mention, I know, uh, council member Kalfis has brought up surplus lands acts and the lands available in the city through, uh, surplus. So the city did hold a city-owned vacant land workshop on August second, two thousand twenty-two. And through that workshop, uh, council, uh, provided staff direction to focus on four parcels to take through the surplus lands act exemption process with HCD. Um, these parcels were the, uh, south of Temecula Parkway interchange parcel, Diaz property, the Main Street Mercedes Y, Jefferson Avenue and Uptown parcel. And so staff has engaged with a consultant who will be guiding us through this process. And with that, discussion and questions.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have any questions before we move to, uh, public comment?
A few questions here.
Okay.
Mayor, real quick. Um, so I saw that you put the, uh, surplus lands that we have available. Are those four lands on there, are those just ones that the previous council identified as possible lands that we could use for affordable housing units?
Yes.
Do you know how many currently, uh, other own, uh, lands that we own in the city that could be used? Are those just like the four main ones that?
Yes, I actually have the, uh, well, for affordable housing specifically or in general?
Or just in general?
Um, so I do have that map here. We can go ahead and put that slide up. So this is directly from that workshop and these are the list of fourteen properties and their areas. I know it's a very small image there.
Perfect, that's the only question I had before, uh, discussion.
Okay, any other questions? All right, um, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
We do, Mr. Mayor, um, and because it is a business item, they have five minutes each. The first speaker is Laurel Lamont to be followed by Lynn Kelly Leonard.
Okay. Welcome.
Hi. All right, so I looked through that ARCOG fifty-eight-page document. And is, to the best of my knowledge, we don't have either CLTs or RHT, just the, two years ago, the, the research paper, right? That's all we have is the, the initiative and, and the information on it. And in there it says it, we're about five to ten years out from being able to do anything with that if we haven't already started. I've been asking for housing for about seven years. So if we haven't gotten started yet, when? When are we gonna get started? At what point is this gonna be important enough to start doing something? We have so many subcommittees and commissions and advisory boards, but we're not doing anything. And we, we pay all of these boards, right? We pay all of these people. We pay you. Are we gonna start doing our homework? Because, Stu, you said Temecula was designed in a very specific manner for a very specific reason. That's the reason we postponed SB nine, right? Well, it was designed to exclude the workforce. It was, it was designed to not have housing that the workforce can afford. Are we gonna fix that? Who is Temecula's workforce? Who are they? How many are there? Because from the beginning of time, the less our economic workforce has always been. It's always existed. We're not transitional employment. We're necessary and essential and you wanna build homes around the accessibility to that workforce, to that employment. But that employment can't be included in the housing design, in the zoning? That's a local decision. It's a local issue. We have RENA numbers because local municipalities did not design better. So now state is mandating. But meeting the status quo, the state's bare minimum, isn't cutting it. Our traffic exists because we're not addressing the problem. We're band-aiding the issue and waiting for it to be somebody else's problem to deal with. But it's our problem now. And it's gonna become bigger and more of a problem. I want the city to know its numbers. What is the average income of the service industry that serves this community? What is that? Does the city know that? Why isn't city council seeking those numbers? Is city council gonna reach out? Are you gonna meet the workforce where they're at? Do you ask them what they need, who they are, what's the demographic? Who are our affordable housing tenants? Do you know them? Do they know you? Are you gonna do something? Are you gonna start to educate yourselves? Or are you just gonna keep relying on city staff to feed you information? Are you gonna do your own homework? I offered you books. You said you had plenty. Let's get involved. Let's start doing something. You know why people don't trust government? Because you spin your wheels and you pass the buck. Do something. Solve problems. I don't get paid to do this, but I'm spending hours trying to understand what you don't, you specifically, city council. Or you won't. Because you trust city staff to do what it hasn't done.
Next speaker.
The next speaker is Lynn Leonard to be followed by our final speaker, Melissa Borbenet.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, council members and staff. My name is Lynn Kelly Leonard and I am the Director of Housing Programs and Compliance at Habitat for Humanity Inland Valley. Uh, thank you, Heidi, for that informative presentation and for including our program in there. Just wanted to say we appreciate the city's support and partnership and also the willingness for the city to explore new ideas and to address the affordable housing issues that we have here in Temecula and in the region. You know, we've made this analogy before. Um, the community land trusts, regional land trusts are just two tools in the affordable housing toolbox in addition to all of the other tools that the city is currently using, such as the affordable, the hundreds of affordable units you have, the ADU program, critical home repair program, funding our homebuyer education program and other housing element programs. So as we continue to work together in partnership, we appreciate, um, just looking forward into the future and creating new tools together. If you have any questions about our programs, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
And the last speaker is Melissa Borbenet.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Okay, where's my clock? I don't see a clock. Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Hi, I'm Melissa Borbenet and I would like to speak on this agenda item specific to representation. I'm sure that you know there's roughly a hundred and ten thousand people who live here in Temecula and there's five districts, so whatever the breakdown is as far as who you represent, I'm concerned, I'm interested in who you represent and hopefully one day soon, maybe in your next fax with Zach, you can talk about your constituents, all of them, all a hundred and ten thousand, to the best of your ability. Because it's not a secret. Councilmember Stewart, I think, mentioned secrets. Councilmember Stewart, I think, mentioned secrets earlier, the manufacturers and the jobs here, but it's not a secret that we're in the midst of a housing crisis, bad. Laurel Lamont brought that to your attention seven years ago. The redevelopment agencies, that funding stopped, you know that, and if you don't know that, then you're gonna learn that right now. That funding stopped. Not necessarily because of what Temecula did, but because cities across the country, excuse me, across California were misusing those funds. And when the state did it, they did it with the intention of getting rid of a lot of the red tape, a lot of the bureaucracy. Because that was, that's the reason always for it, for everything to take so long when it comes to government. But what did cities do? Cities did things like what happened with, in this city with Warehouse. Warehouse was just originally investors of 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 moderate means. And they got something to the tune of six million dollars from Temecula, from the era of redevelopment agencies. So they took that six million dollars that came with virtually no strings attached, and we know this, we did our research, we did our research. With virtually no strings attached, just income caps, income requirements. And they gave these private investors six million dollars, six million dollars to build Warehouse. And if you've been paying attention, you know that there's been problem after problem after problem after problem with Warehouse. And that those people who who own and operate and manage Warehouse have violated law after law after law. And there's been some recourse thankfully because Laurel and 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 myself, we put in the hours because I don't know why. We put in the hours out of principle because it's the right thing to do. But going back to your position here, you represent a hundred and ten thousand people. I would like to know, I would like to know, out of those hundred and ten thousand constituents, how many of them work here? That's an important piece of information. How many of them work here? If you wanna talk about traffic, if you wanna talk about pollution, if you wanna talk about parents being in the home and taking care of their children, then that's an important stat. That's something to know. Do you know that? We've tried to get that information from city council and nobody seems to know. So out of the hundred and ten thousand, how many actually work here? Or how many commute somewhere else? And then out of this community that you that you you brag about, that wouldn't be able to function the way that it functions without the essential workforce, how many of the essential workforce lives here? What's, what are those numbers? You, we try to get those numbers. They don't seem to exist. That's what representation looks like, to know who's here. Who works here, who lives here, what they're doing, what they want. Do they know who you are? Probably not. But it's not their responsibility to know who you are because they reside within a representative government representation. So it's your responsibility to know who they are and to know what their struggles are. And to know what they want. It's your responsibility. And they're paying you to do it, and you just gotta raise. So what does that look like? Because housing is housing is bipartisan. So let's join forces on this topic because it affects you, it affects your grandchildren, it affects me, it affects the local economic workforce, it affects all of us. You wanna talk about abortion. If people have homes to raise their children in, those rates will go down. You wanna talk about taxes, where are the conservatives? Newsom just approved Patton, Patton State Hospital to start to house the homeless because we have a homeless epidemic too. How much do you think that costs in tax dollars? So instead of throwing money at fifteen million different things, and instead of arguing over everything like sentences and a proclamation, let's represent the constituents, let's do our jobs.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes uh all of the public speakers on this item.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and um maybe just open this up for discussion, I guess, at this point, and I think I'll turn it over to uh councilmember Calvis uh to start up.
Well, first I wanna say thank you uh to Heidi and city staff for that presentation. I know a lot of work went into it, and there's a lot of nuances which we've seen with the housing crisis that we have and the affordability crisis that we have. And we know it's uh not just a Temecula issue issue, it's a California issue, it's a national issue. But there are things that we can do to help out locally, I believe. Um, and the CLT model, the Community Land Trust model, is something that I see, it's a branch of, or could be used as a branch of for the affordable housing. It could be used for attainable homeownership, where it'd be a li- a limited equity model uh that we could look into for the city of Temecula. Um, and and governments, our federal government and our state government, there are a lot of subsidies for individuals who are not working, for individuals making under a certain threshold. But there are not, there isn't a lot of help for the working class people, the the service industry, the retail industry. Um, but for those that aren't working, we have housing, we have the food, we have phones, we have all of these government um handouts, if you will, for individuals not to work. Um, and in my mind, I would rather help people who are working, who are trying to own a home eventually. Um, but maybe aren't able to afford a home. And this, the Community Land Trust, for me, um a possible use for it, again, would be that attainable home ownership model. Um, which would be a limited equity model, which we could look into uh further after this discussion. Um, if the if the council would wanna do that. But again, the the CLT for me also is is about local control. Um, again, it's owned, that land is permanently owned by the community. And the community is able to put conditions on that land trust. They can be at the the groundwork of the regulatory agreements with the developers and with the nonprofits such as Habitat for Humanity. Um, and other entities like that. Um, so I guess my goal here today and 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 to express it to the council um is really to look into helping the working class individuals that live into me, or work in Temecula and want to live in Temecula. Um, I think it's a possibility, again, if we partner with with local private businesses, local nonprofits. We could use this limited uh equity model for the Community Land Trust. And it could just be a creative solution, again, to that national and local affordability crisis for housing. Um, and the creation of a CLT, again, with just the mission of that attainable homeownership with the limited equity, is that middle bridge between affordable housing and that never ending rat race and never being able to save enough to get out of that. And if you, in affordable housing, if you end up making over a certain amount of money, you're not able to live in affordable housing. So you get kicked out of affordable housing, but you're not necessarily able to afford market rate rents. And to me, the Community Land Trust, that limited equity attainable home ownership model is the bridge between these two um, two classes. Um, so I guess uh I'm interested to see what the rest of the council has to say, uh but that was really my goal with with having staff present to us the Community Land Trust. There are so many nuances, like I originally said, to housing, and this could just, it could possibly be something that could be used to help alleviate something, uh some of that locally.
All right, thank you, councilmember Calvis. Councilmember Alexander? No, go ahead.
All right, so I just wanna thank both of you for speaking out. I know you guys have been talking for a while and talking about housing and what that looks like, and I know we've had our conversation as well in the past. But I do wanna say thank you to as well the former city council members and staff for what you guys have done, because this is a wonderful city. And that should be appreciated because a lot has been put into it. Um, I think for me, my biggest thing is is, you know, I'd like to be able to agree to listening in on what the city can do uh in getting a better understanding of what this would look like. But I think for me, the biggest thing would be hearing from the residents because ultimately this comes down to taxpayer dollars, because how else would we end up funding or being able to fund the difference uh possibly with this or with the land itself? Is this what our city wants? And so I think if we were to survey our city or individuals here within our area, is this what our community wants? Is this what our community needs? And if they do, then let's move forward. But again, I think like you you had both stated, do we have the numbers? Do we know exactly the need? And so my question would be, let's survey for it, if that's something. The next question I have, um and just thinking out loud, is, is it the city, is it the city council's responsibility to supply housing? And I think that's a big question I think most of us really truly have, and it's kind of like the elephant in the room, and nobody wants to say that, but let's be real, do, is it our responsibility? Or if there is a gap, is it the community's responsibility to help out? And so I believe for us, it's being able to allow the ability to have housing there. But we're almost built out as as a um as a city. We have, I think, what was it, sixteen sl- uh sixteen uh lots for which are possibly be available for um housing. But again, going back, is that what the community as a whole wants? Um, so I think that's my biggest couple, couple of things is, what does a community want? And is it really our responsibility to house individuals? And where is the line? You know, I it my, I was thinking as I was looking at the numbers, like I don't even know how many houses we'd be able to stick on one of those lots. Let's just throw out a number. Let's say it was twenty-five. You know, how do we navigate who gets those housing, those houses? Is it fair to one and not to another? Um, so it, it's a tug. And again, is that the responsibility that we as a city council wanna take on to onto this desk? And is that our, our job? So that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pretim Stewart.
Um, quick question to Heidi. So um, is it, didn't you say in your presentation that a city cannot own a CLT?
The city cannot own the land.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, we cannot be land owners of affordable housing development.
Essentially, that's, that's what a CLT is. It has, whoever owns that land is really in control of that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So us, um, I know I uh provided documents on the Irvine Housing Trust, cuz that's one of the best trusts out there that I could find, or community land trusts that I could find out there. There isn't too many of this. This is really something that kinda spearheaded really after COVID, um with all the housing issues that happened. And so they started in here in in locally, right, in their ca- city council, and then from there branched out and figured out the legalities of creating a CLT. But conversation starts here. Just don't know how much, that would be a Peter question, really, how much we can be involved and how it goes from here.
Well, let's go back to Irvine. So it's like, so are you saying that Irvine, it started at the city council level, but didn't the Irvine Trust, the the big developer actually fund this thing and, yeah?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, so it was a big developer who funded the Irvine land, uh, community trust.
Right.
And became a non, or created a nonprofit arm to their.
Got it.
Yeah, big organization or company.
That, that's what I wanted to.
Okay, great.
Piggyback on what Brendan was saying. Um, also, you know, I moved here in nineteen ninety-one, and I paid one eighty-five, and my house immediately started dropping in price. And by nineteen ninety-four, or ninety-five, um the uh Vale Ranch development, after Red Hawk kinda started building, they built uh Vale Ranch as an affordable housing. Uh, uh, it, it wasn't technically an affordable housing, but they were selling for less than a hundred thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-five. And so, you know, that's what caused a lot of our traffic issues. A lot of people moved up here for the cheap houses. And so we, we kept building and building and building, and and now the prices of homes have made it such that the residents have to drive somewhere else to get the higher paying jobs. And so that's, that's the real issue with the traffic is, um, you know, we, we do have an affordable housing issue here in town. You know, it's, it's not cheap to live in Temecula. And so as far as affordable housing, um, how many affordable affordable housing units do we have? Off the top of your head, do you know?
Seven hundred and five.
Think it was over seven hundred?
Plus a hundred and sixty-nine in the queue.
Okay, and so, and they're spread out over the entire city. They're not in like one specific area, correct?
They're not in one specific area.
Yeah, and so, so we do have affordable housing available for our uh workers who are, you know, doing the jobs in our city. And we, we're looking for opportunities to create more and build more. And so that, that is not something we're not looking at right now. I mean, we, we definitely wanna make sure our people are taken care of and our workers are able to afford to live and work here. Um, as far as a ton, uh affordable housing, that's, that's, I'm kinda with Jessica. It's kinda like, where do we where is our responsibility line in this? Because um uh, it will take, well, a CLT we can't own. So really, we need a, a angel developer investor to actually buy this property and control this uh uh CLT. So I mean, that's, that's, I think, a tall ask. I don't, you know, if he's out there, by all means, let's do it. Um, but we're kinda limited up here, and it's not that we don't wanna do it and that we don't know what we're talking about, and we don't have the information. Cuz we've heard a lot of information over the last few years, for sure. And so we've all been brought up to speed on what we're, what we're able to do, and government does move incredibly slow. I mean, they, you, you're right. I mean, you've been talking about it for seven years, and we've been talking about that freeway for twenty, and it's just now started. And that's, that's government. I mean, I I'm a businessman. If I ran my business like this, I'd be dead in the water. So, but unfortunately, government, that's the way it works. And so it takes two, three years to get through environmentals on anything. So it, it's like, so I'm, I'm kinda like, I, I don't know what else we can do. We can keep building affordable housing for our citizens who can't afford to buy a home, which I understand that because, you know, the homes have gotten absolutely incredibly expensive around here and everywhere, but here especially. And so I, I think we do have an obligation to that population of our uh workforce to provide that kind of housing that's affordable. So I wanna keep doing as much as I possibly can, but our hands are tied on a lot of these things, so.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pretim. Um, I'll, I kinda have a few notes, and you picked up on one of them, that we've seven hundred and five uh affordable units and a hundred and sixty-nine in the queue. Um, some of those are for sale homes as well. So that's eight hundred and seventy-four. And when I was reading up on the Irvine Land Trust, I was like, wow, this is really great. They did four hundred and seven units. And I'd looked up Irvine's population, and their population's three times our size, they're three hundred thousand people. And so we've done like twice as much. Uh, our population's a little over a hundred thousand. Um, so I think we've done a pretty good job. If this is the model, if this is like the best, you know, community land trust model out there, um, maybe they need to look at doing a better job. Um, I've been on SCAG, so Southern California Association of Governments, for the last three plus years. We went through the Rena battle. It was pretty intense fight uh to get some of the coastal cities, to negotiate with some of the coastal cities to build more housing. So historically, the coast is looked to the inland empire. I know we don't like that, that term, but we've looked to Riverside County for housing, cheap housing, uh and that's the model that they've presented. And um it took uh Mayor Bailey at the time in Riverside and Supervisor Spiegel at the time uh to negotiate with uh the LA mayor and some other cities along the coast to actually start building. Um, and I think that's an important step, so I think that will uh help. I wholeheartedly agree with the speakers that we do have an affordability uh crisis in our city, and and it extends to Marietta, and it extends, I was looking at homes on Redfin and Hemet and was shocked to see some of the prices in Hemet. No disrespect to Hemet in any way, but housing in our region has exploded in price. Um, so we're looking for ways uh to offset that. Um, Marietta's building um a, a, a new development where they're going to have an ADU on every single, single family home. Uh, the, the neighborhood isn't for that. They're up in arms about it, but I think it's a, a good thing. I think we can do more uh encouraging uh smaller homes, smaller development. So if you have smaller homes in our city where it, it obviously makes the, that cost more affordable. So that's looking at it from a, you know, a private side of things. Um, you know, I, I hear about the workforce and and we've sort of reached out and you know, I haven't seen any private businesses wanna step up and help solve that problem. I, I think we should explore that, you know, like a a Costco maybe or something like that, that would wanna step up and say, hey, we want our employees to also be able to live here and and we'll work with the city on a project. I think that would be great. One thing that I would wanna do is prioritize Temecula residents. And it's my understanding that you cannot actually do that with housing. So um, you can't build a project and say this is only for people that live in Temecula. So you just can't do that. That's discrimination. So you could get people from anywhere could come here and they would have an equal opportunity. So if we build a project and we want to help out our lower economic workforce and we say, we want to help you, but we actually can't do that, it could, the home could go to anyone. So I struggle with that. I'm, I don't think that the land trust is a bad idea. I, I just don't think that we've done a bad job at this. I think kind of creates like the layers of this. I would have to learn a little bit more in the subcommittee, I think, to understand the layers of it and what that would look like. I do obviously like the partnerships that we have with Habitat for Humanity. I think that's important. I think they do a very good job of it and and have, has had a very good success rate in our city. Plus the wraparound services that go with that. Financial literacy is so important as well. So those are some of the things that, you know, that concern me. I mean, obviously, the, the who funds it? I mean, the city could, could kick in money, but it's going to take a developer, it's take someone else as well. So we would need to find that private partnership, whether it's a developer, whether it was a business in town or or another entity that valued that as well. I, I'm not opposed to you know, learning more about this. I, I have read, I do have many books and I have read some of the books that that have been sent my way. I read a lot. I listen a lot. I understand this issue. And like I said, spending time at SCAG and and understanding it, it's complex and something that I think while we want local control, housing is a statewide issue of concern that we need to be mindful of as well. If we're just building housing here and no one else is doing anything, it's not going to solve this problem. So this is where the state comes in and and holds cities accountable. And the speaker's right that some, some redevelopment agencies did very poorly. I, I don't think we did at all. And we're paying the price for it. And that's unfortunate because we, we obviously created a significant amount of affordable housing units through that process and revitalized some parts of our city in, in the same time as well. So I'm not opposed to, you know, learning more about this. I always want to learn and be inquisitive and ask questions and try to understand if this is something we can use or if it's something that would actually help the residents. Because at the end of the day, I would say that helping the residents and helping people that live here and and work here is our job. And and it's just, how do we do that and how we do that in an effective way? Mister City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. I just, I wanted to add a couple of things to the conversation and some of which the speaker who left, left us with. Housing is going to forever, I think, in our lifetime here be, be a topic of conversation. I mean, I think we, I think we've embraced it as a city. It's going to continue to be a challenge. I think there are things that, some of which you heard tonight, but some things that we're doing. I just want to remind the general public and I, I wanted, and Councilmember Calvis and I talked a little bit about this. These, these are things that I wanted to get out there on the table. It was mentioned, we don't have demographics, we don't have workforce demo, we do have workforce demographics. I mean, I, I'm, I'm, nobody asked me for those, so I didn't have time to prepare those. But I'm happy to work with our economic development team, share those with the city council, you can share them with your constituents. But that data is available and we can break it down in a number of different ways and we'll, we'll, we'll work on getting those reports to the city council. Councilmember Alexander, you mentioned a survey. I, I actually don't think that's a bad idea. In fact, we try to do community surveys every two years. And we're on track to, I think we're due to do one early twenty four. And so the topic of housing, the topic of attainable housing, the topic of rating the importance of that for our community, I think we should add that to, to our list of things that should go into the survey instrument. And so I wrote that down. The other thing that was mentioned by you, Mayor, and and I don't know or profess to know how this may work, but what I think the speaker is, is looking for is sort of a, a public-private partnership attainable housing model that that may include government, but it, but it also has to include corporate America. And, and, and then that's the only way you could sort of replace the absence of redevelopment funding to buy down the cost to build something that is lower than the market rate, right? And and we don't have that redevelopment dollar. So you know, I don't also mind offering, you know, talking to some of our larger employers. And and we could do that as a city staff, you know, the abbots of the world, the Costcos, the UHSs, and see if they are having trouble or their employees are having difficulty identifying local housing. And what does that look like? And what do those volumes look like? Because they could be that investor that steps in and works with the city and we identify land. So, you know, that's something we can continue to look at. Surplus Land Act, I'm not, I want to spend a lot of time on that, but the city council is entrenched in the Surplus Land Act. There's a legal process that we have to go through to even consider developing on our vacant land for affordable housing. But it's designed, it's designed, the state has designed it to go through this process and identify opportunities. We're doing that. You guys are involved in that and we're going to continue to be involved in that. The other thing is legislation. You know, what can we do? We, we can get more active in legislation. We can get more active with our assembly member and our senator in terms of identifying maybe more tax credits because they're so competitive now for affordable housing developers. Maybe they could carry some legislation that would help ease the burden and the competitiveness so we could fund more of these types of projects. And so there are things that are, that are going on on various levels and there are things that we can continue to do and and keep the council prized. But thank you for letting me just kind of weigh in there. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. Any other questions or comments?
I just want, I just want to say thank you to my councilmembers. I agree with so much of what you said and you as well, City Manager. I just would encourage the housing subcommittee to, to explore those public-private partnerships that you talked about, Mayor. I think that is definitely something that's worth exploring. I think it's also worth exploring the legalities and we can repeat on this on even like the first right of refusal to Temecula workforce. See if that is a thing. I know, and I agree, I've heard it is illegal and I would like a solid answer from from city staff to see if that is even possible. Because I know there's, you can give like twenty percent of housing goes to the senior population. So it's, it's been done in the past where these groups are either discriminated against or for. So maybe that could be something that could be looked into further. But a lot of the issues, like City Manager said, has to do with the state legislature. And when, when there are state tax credits and benefits for developers to build more units, like Councilwoman Alexander said, if a developer is only going to put twenty four units on a, on a five acre lot and a developer that's going to get more tax credits and more profit from a hundred and twenty four units, that, that hundred and twenty four unit developer is most likely going to get the bid and the the rights to the property. So a lot of that comes from the state legislature and like the manager said as well, us lobbying for them to help with the developers and that could help the, the local housing crisis that we are all experiencing. But no, thank you for, again, city staff for that presentation. And thank you to my councilmembers for listening and I think a lot of work to be done in the subcommittee. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. So we'll look forward to that. I know the speaker, she's left, but she likely won't be happy that it's going to go to a subcommittee, but that's how we do work in the city and that's how we effectively move through complex topics. So look forward to seeing that at a subcommittee. All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have the roll, the votes?
We, we, we do, we do.
You'll need to reconvene the
So let me recess the city council meeting.
I'll reconvene the Community Services District.
Excellent. Thank you, Mister President. And I'll go ahead and announce that we have a hundred percent approval, ninety five vote yes, zero vote no. So assessment counts are at ninety five. Assessment percentage is a hundred percent. So it does pass and those are included. And that will be noted in the official record as well.
Okay. Then I will, do I need to do anything else?
Nope, you can go ahead and adjourn.
I will, I don't know what you need, oh, don't you need to adopt the resolution?
Oh, yes.
An item you have.
Yes, on your item.
Okay. So reopen.
I'm sorry, I forgot about the motion. So yes, now we need an official motion.
I'll move the item.
Second. All right, it's been moved to second and please vote. And that passes four zero. Now can I, all right, now I will recess.
And I'll reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. Do we have any items for future city council agendas? Okay, City Managers report.
Nothing further than I, Mister Mayor.
City Attorney?
Nothing further tonight.
All right, thank you both. I want to ask for my, my colleagues to join me in, in a little moment of silence. We have a world in turmoil at times, whether it's war, whether it's natural disasters, at times are very complex world that we live in can be problematic and troubling every time we turn on the news. And I just want us to take a moment of silence for a safer, more prosperous world that we can all live in. Thank you, we adjourn.